It is six o'clock, so we are going to get started. Everyone is here. Dr. Cunningham will not be with us this evening as she is not feeling well. And Ms. Harris will be speaking for her with her responses. So Mr. Costin, if it's okay, we'll put Ms. Cunningham's, Dr. Cunningham's responsive at the end. The last, the last person to respond, okay?
I'm sorry, say that one more time about the last.
Dr. Cunningham was the first in alphabetical order. She's the one that's not here. And Ms. Harris, who is the second person, is going to speak for Dr. Cunningham as well at the end. I'd like she'll do herself first and then Dr. Cunningham last. Is that okay?
Correct, okay.
And so everyone, Dr. Cunningham could not join us today, but Ms. Harris will be speaking her responses for her. We have sent the questions ahead of time for all of our candidates. Okay, so good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Logan. I am the co-chairperson of the Legislative Action Team of the Plainfield Education Association. We are sponsoring this forum of Board of Education candidates. And we are here with Ms. Marquette Harris, Mr. Alan Lilly, Ms. Sarah Virgo, Mr. Victor Webb, and Mrs. Hane Wyatt. We are going to give each candidate an opportunity to introduce themselves. And then we have a few questions for each candidate. And after the introduction, each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. And we have our timekeeper, Ms. Barrett, who will help us with that. So we'll start with Ms. Harris. Would you introduce yourself, please?
Good evening. My name is Marquette Harris. My husband and I have lived in Plainfield for over four years. We wanted to raise our children in a community in which they would thrive. My children are a product of the Plainfield School District. And I am proud of their achievements. Anyone that knows me knows that I have long been an advocate for children and families. In fact, I'm retired Child Welfare Administrator. And in that capacity, I was responsible for evaluating policy, programs, standards, and performances. So when I was asked to run, I thought about why and what would be my priority. And I think that we can all agree that currently the system is not really meeting our high expectation. And so my priority is to improve our statewide ranking in the core proficiency areas. So if we do that, if we can improve that, if we are going to improve student outcomes, we are going to enclose the learning gap, we will be able to involve the community, students, all of our stakeholders in the development of a strategic plan. And that plan is something that we all have to buy into. We're all would be, we all would be invested in that. And so those were, you know, when I was approached with this idea, I said, you know what? This is something that I know would benefit, sorry, benefit our, our community. And so I asked your support for Columns Two, Cunningham, Harris, and Lilly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Lilly, would you introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alan Lilly, Plainfield resident, proud parent of two girls in the Plainfield School System. I'm a project, sorry, Program Quality Manager for the Department of Defense. I've been a, I've been a resident in Plainfield since high school. Yes, Plainfield, honestly. My children currently attend the Plainfield School System. Married twenty years. My high school sweetheart from the Plainfield School System. And I'm trying to, we are trying to look forward to bettering our system educationally to have our kids compete on the world stage, not to stop at high school or it's okay to go to high school. No, it's, it's good to go there, but you can go further. So as kids who look like our residents and kids who often took excel school and compete on a world stage versus stopping at the happy point, give them a chance to compete and make an honest decision because if not, we as taxpayers wouldn't pay for them in the long run if we don't have them pass school and go further. Don't, don't want to have the kids being a burden on society, having to be successful and to give it, have a chance at life versus stopping short. That's why I ran, I'm long running, I'm sorry. But just to have our kids have a chance. I have a senior right now in school and a freshman in school right now in Plainfield. So yes, those children, how I treat my kids, I'll treat your kids and those kids in the city. All stakeholders because our money is accountable. Have our tax dollars being held accountable by the board. That would be us, will come too.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Next, we have Ms. Virgo. Would you introduce yourself?
Sure. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Virgo. First, I'd like to thank Melissa Logan and the members of the Plainfield Education Association for inviting me to participate this evening and for hosting such an important event. I also, we just learned that Dr. Cunningham wasn't feeling well, so send best get well wishes to her as well. For those of you that I may not know, I'm a proud resident of the Queen City, a wife, a healthcare professional, a community activist, and a mom of two school-aged children, Jack and Beta ages thirteen and three. I graduated with honors from public high school in the South and then went on to attend John Jay College and St. John's University. I currently work at Memorial Sloan Kettering Cancer Center where I have for the last fifteen years. And during that time, I have advocated for patient equity in underserved communities for enhanced awareness for cancer screenings, for streamlined diagnostic processes, and to really improve the quality of care for millions. I've also been really privileged to establish and serve on a variety of boards dedicated to guaranteeing inclusion among employees. I believe that serving on the Plainfield Board of Education offers one of the most meaningful ways to contribute to the strength and the success of our city. And I understand the direct connection between education and the vitality of our community. I look forward to this evening's exchange and I am once again grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Webb, would you like to introduce yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Webb.
Good evening. Thank you for the, for the teachers' unions invited us for this event tonight. My name is Victor Webb. I'm a former student, an advocate for the community. I've dedicated many years of my life to bringing people together. And as a Plainfield resident, one commonality that we share is that when we leave these borders, we're not viewed as individual citizens, but as instead as being from Plainfield. And although I'm proud of my city and I know that we're smart, driven, and resilient, I know that there are some things, some obstacles that are usually against us. And I would like to take this opportunity as a board member to recognize our strength and our value and help restore some of the luster to the Plainfield name. I believe that education is the key to evening the plain, evening the Plainfield, both academically and socially. My involvement with the district started after leaving Kane College, where I was a part of an organization called AmeriCorps, where we worked with elementary school students. Well, I worked, I worked as a, and with elementary school students as a mentor and a tutor. When I completed the AmeriCorps program, I established the National School Community Corps in Plainfield. And that was around nine eleven. And as a program coordinator, I created programs that supported staff and students in classrooms at Maxon, Woodland Elementary School, and the New Washington Community School. After leaving that program, I worked for the American Red Cross, where I was the Director of Youth and Volunteer Services, where I built strong relationships both through the county and state and established groundbreaking programs in the schools throughout the counties. I like to be on the board because I feel like helping the youth of Plainfield grow and become successful, well-rounded citizens have been my mission for the last twenty years. In order to achieve these, in order to achieve these goals, it would be important to establish cohesion and focus our attention on giving the support to the students and the faculty as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Webb. Mrs. Wyatt, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you. So good evening, everyone. I'd like to also thank the PEA for inviting me to participate with this forum. My name is Hane Wyatt. I grew up right here in Plainfield, attending Plainfield Public Schools. And I enjoyed my community and all it had to offer growing up here. I'm a wife, a mom, a community leader, and a youth advocate who serves with a purpose to motivate positive change. My husband and I raised our three beautiful children here, who have also attended Plainfield Public Schools. I've worked in Plainfield and have been serving my community diligently and the youth since my return from college in two thousand nine. And I wish to continue doing so in a different capacity. I'm a candidate for the Plainfield Board of Education so that I could attain a seat at the table to advocate for all youth and everything that is necessary for them to grow and develop in an educational environment that is nurturing, not just to their minds, but to their entire being as they grow to as productive members of society. I believe that we must fight to improve our systems and procure the resources and services that not only our children need, but to also advocate for the respect, resources, and support that our administration, staff, and teachers deserve to effectively do their job. Again, I'd just like to thank you guys and I'm excited to get started with this forum.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyatt. Ms. Harris, did you have a introductory statement for Ms. Cunningham?
Am I unmuted yet?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yes, I do. Okay, this is from Dr. Monique Cunningham. Hello, and thank you to the Plainfield Education Association for inviting me to the Plainfield Board of Education Candidates Forum. Unfortunately, I am unable to physically or virtually participate. However, I thank my team, Column Two, aiming higher together, Cunningham, Lilly, and Harris for speaking on my behalf in my absence. I am elder Dr. Monique Cunningham. I am married with three lovely children. I earn a doctorate degree in both theology and philosophy. I own and operate a family childcare center in Plainfield. Because of my passion for education, I decided to run for a seat on the Plainfield Board of Education. One of my biggest concerns is the unpreparedness of our children when going to college. If I have the honor of being elected, one of my major concern is the gap between early childhood education and elementary education. With good policy, we, the board, can bridge that gap and work towards aiming higher for better educational outcomes. Vote for the three Board of Education candidates in Column Two, Monique Cunningham, Alan Lilly, and Marquette Harris for the Plainfield Board of Education. Again, thank you, Plainfield Education Association, and all of those who virtually watch this forum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Costin is going to ask our first question. I would like to introduce Mr. Keith Costin Jr. He is the president of the
Recording in progress.
We are starting a recording now. I apologize we didn't start it before. When we remembered, we wanted to get everyone through the first round first. So we will provide a copy of the recording for all the candidates for your own use. Mr. Costin.
Good evening. And again, I just want to piggyback off of Melissa's statement. Thank you to everyone for spending your evening with us and finally it not robbery to come and answer some of the questions of our Plainfield Education Association members. And thank you for those members and those that live in town that have decided to join us this evening. Our first question, and we will start again, it's going in alphabetical order with Ms. Harris. Do you currently attend board meetings? And if so, how would you characterize them?
I've attended board meetings through a course of Zoom process. And before that, I attended in person. I find them sometimes to be contentious and, and very long. And, and I, I really feel that, and from my experience, when you keep the focus on the reason that you're there and for the Board of Education, it has to be the children, it has to be, you know, addressing the needs of our educational system. If we keep the focus on that, then I think that somehow there'll be less contention. And I think that we will be able to get a lot, much more done. And I just don't think that, that the meetings really should take as long as they do. I mean, the last meeting that I attended, I think it started at like seven or eight and went on past ten, and that's a long time. So I am committed to working collaboratively with each of the board members, you know, on those items that are going to produce the type of outcomes that we need to raise our educational standards and ensure that our children are prepared to go out and compete in a global society. I am prepared to go into these sessions to work with each and every one of our board members to responsibly, you know, look at our budget and make sure that we are using, using, spending our money responsibly to address the safety issues that need to be addressed. We have children who are returning. Oops, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And next, I'm sorry, next, Mr. Lilly. And if the candidate needs me to repeat the question, just let me know.
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Costin. So I've attended some meetings and I feel like they can be, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so meetings are, are not as efficient. I think it can be better to spend our tax train dollars to work on, focus on, or remain focused on the children, the inanimate users, the kids. So when we have issues that come up and, and get sidetracked or sidebought on adults who have different opinions, it's okay, it's a different opinion, but the common interest is the children, not the adults who want to talk about other things that are not relative to the meeting. So I feel like it's not being sufficient. So the kids is out. Let's focus on the kids, remain on the kids. So we, they, and they're, they can be lengthy at times, but our plan is to just make sure we have the kids at heart. That's our focus, have the kids at heart and focus on our children, our future.
Thank you.
Ms. Virgo?
Thank you, Mr. Costin. I do attend board meetings. I, I think the majority of the board meetings tend to be very political, which is unfortunate because it distracts from the task at hand, which is providing for the success of our school district. A portion of the current board, in my opinion, tends to focus on aligning with other political forces present in Plainfield. Although I recognize and support alternative ideas and different political ideologies, I think this kind of alignment for power alone is really hurting the, the mission of the board, which is to gain the resources necessary to effectively and efficiently provide the schools with the necessary funding and staff to properly educate our children and give them the foundation that's necessary to become all that they can be. And in doing so, provide Plainfield with the well-trained and educated workforce and community. There's an old saying that says, "Strong schools equal strong city." And, but that can't be achieved if we're fighting against one another for the sake of fighting or simply to prove a personal point.
Thank you, Ms. Virgo. Mr. Webb?
Yes, and I would have to say I agree with my running mate that at times the board does seem politically divided, and that's really unfortunate. And I have attended a few board meetings over the years, both in person and virtually. And I would also characterize them as lengthy, but also would describe it as a work in progress. I think understanding that we should really oversee without overreaching, being driven by interests and not individual positions, and having a broad focus that focuses on student concerns and appreciating each school's unique and shifting needs. But also understanding that a not-so-unique set of circumstances and a lot of inconsistency has plagued the district for many years, and that's something that I hope to change. I respect the work that our past and current board members have done, and I'd like to continue any progress we've made and move past any of the barriers that have hindered us in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Wyatt?
Yes, thank you. So yes, of course, I've attended board meetings in person and virtually, of course, since COVID. And I'd just like to say that the board meetings, for me, they're very confrontational. They're unproductive and it's embarrassing. The way that the board has been run and, and the way that it's structured in a way where board members are literally at two different spectrums. And instead of them deciding to agree to disagree on matters that actually directly impact the students and the staff and the administration, it's just a constant battle for power or a constant battle for one particular view over another view. And I feel like we need to learn how to work together as adults in the best interest of our district in its entirety to move it forward. So it's a little disheartening, especially as a parent. You attend board meetings from a parent's perspective and you're looking to get answers to questions that you have regarding your students' learning environment, but you can't because the board is so busy discussing human resource matters or other matters that have nothing to do with the students. So I think ultimately, what we need to do with these board members are just really change the structure and try to find a way to come together and agree to disagree, but make sure that we're making decisions in the best interest of the district and trying to move the district forward. Because it is, it's pretty embarrassing to sit and watch the meetings on a screen or in person as a member of the district, as a parent, as a community leader. But then, when you're looking from the outside in, I feel like Plainfield is just being viewed as a joke. So that's my perspective on the board meetings. Of course, I continue to attend them because I want to know what's going on, but sometimes I don't want to because of that reason alone.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyatt. And Mrs. Harris, Ms. Harris for Dr. Cunningham.
Yes, I've had the opportunity to virtually attend the Plainfield Board of Education meeting. And I will say I like that the meetings have been virtual. I believe that virtual meetings are convenient for not only me as a parent, but for many parents in the community to view, participate, and be informed. In-person meeting can be challenging, and in many ways, I would have to believe more costly than virtual meetings. Transportation, late hours, weather, et cetera, is challenging for the majority of Plainfield residents to come to the meeting. Virtual meetings provide more flexibility to the public. I also feel the meetings run a little too long. And oftentimes, it is difficult for the average person to follow what is actually happening. When I'm elected to the Board of Education, I would like to work on improving the agenda with my fellow board members. At the last hybrid meeting, it was very difficult to follow, see, and hear the board members. It is obvious that there is a great deal of work to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I said earlier, me and Mrs. Logan will be switching back and forth. So now for our second question, Ms. Logan will be asked.
Thank you, Mr. Costin. So our next question, what goals would you like to see accomplished as a member of the board? And our first candidate answer would be Ms. Harris.
As I mentioned earlier, I think that my priority is really addressing the statewide standard that the current, that currently the district is really lagging behind. So I think if we could do that, you know, if we can raise our standards statewide, then we will effectively, you know, be improving the outcomes and the academic outcomes for our children. So that, that's my priority. And I think that it's important to establish and create that strategic plan because we need input from the community, from the stakeholders. And our objectives and our goals need to be bottom-up instead of top-down. We need to understand what the needs, the resources and the needs of our students are. And we need to make sure that we are using our resources, particularly the budget, because Plainfield's budget is over $200 million. And so we need to ensure that the allocation of those, of that budget is meeting the needs of our children. I also feel that the safety, you know, we, we are coming back from a COVID environment. I think that may be a question. But the, you know, our kids have been out of, like, out of in-person schooling. And so, and they've been home. So they were struggling, you know, socially. And so they're returning and having to reconnect, having to adjust emotionally. And so we need support services for them. We need to be able to allow them to structure things so that they can, and provide enhanced learning so they can really catch up. And, okay, thank you. I'm really new to this.
Did you want to finish your thought, Mrs. Harris? You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Okay, Mr. Lilly, what goals would you like to see accomplished as a member of the board?
So our goal, my goal is to have a agreed-upon strategic plan with a plan placed, we can all see, talk to, and listen to. It makes it real to me. Having that plan visible and versus having everyone have their own agenda and work towards their own, their own common plan that's unknown to the rest of board members is not the best interest for our stakeholders. So stakeholders will be you, me, taxpayers, the city, the council, the mayor, everyone who's involved in paying a tax or paying taxes our town, all the stakeholders. So as my running mate, Marquette mentioned, that they matter too. Yes, like it's a bottom-up, not top-down. We want to have everyone involved in the community to help, help push our children to the next level up, to go to college and complete college, to become responsible adults working for a common goal, to be a better person and human, not just to hang around and do nothing. Don't waste your time in life. Let's, let's move forward together. We just want to make sure our kids have a fine chance. So a, a plan in place that's agreed upon and we can all see and talk to and work towards common goals for our children in Plainfield.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Ms. Virgo, what goals would you like to see accomplished as a member of the board?
Thank you, Ms. Logan. So my goals and the goals of my running mates are both simple and achievable. One, seek out and bring to the board additional funding that's already available, but perhaps not properly allocated to Plainfield. I think underfunding has been a chronic problem and the board needs to roll up their sleeves and invest in our students to create a more sustainable outcome for our graduates. Two, we need to establish guaranteed pathways to success for our students. Most of you probably know that the graduation rate across most of New Jersey is ninety percent, but yet in here in Plainfield, it's seventy percent. And just twenty-five percent of those graduates go on to actually graduate from college. Now, with that said, not all students will and should go on to college, but those who gravitate towards a profession that requires college should absolutely have the best preparation for that pathway. Those students who desire to seek an alternative to college, perhaps vocational trade or entrepreneurship, but still want that equitable preparation for those careers should have those pathways defined and reinforced with necessary skills and education for their success. Finally, in addition to what I've mentioned thus far, I also firmly believe that we must improve the way in which our Plainfield families are not only represented but engaged in the educational process. This should be true regardless of differences in language, immigration status, family dynamics, income, and so on. We need to leave with, lead with data-driven decisions and ensure that our educators, staff, and administration are all supported. These goals are, are all achievable, but our approach as leaders needs to be aggressive, thorough, and above all else, a cohesive effort.
Thank you, Ms. Virgo. And Mr. Webb, what goals would you like to see accomplished as a member of the board?
Well, as I mentioned before, consistency is very important. So I'd like to review the current goals that have been established by the board. And if there are some good ones, we'd like to keep them. And if there are some good ones, we'd like to keep them. And if there are not so, and if there are some not-so-good ones, have some discussions with stakeholders and kind of assess the position of the district as a whole as it measures up within the county and the state. I'm always an advocate for achieving goals as long as they make sense and are results-driven and progressive. Quite honestly, though, if I had to choose one goal for the district, it would be to introduce a service-oriented curriculum or establish a graduation requirement of completing 120 hours of community service for each student within four years to graduate. I believe service is very important, and it allows students to be well-rounded. It, it creates opportunities, uh, for faculty and the community, students as a whole, families, to get together and really, um, focus on different ways of learning, and that will drive education. And as our platform says, education is empowerment.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Uh, Mrs. Wyatt, what goals would you like to see accomplished as a member of the board?
Thank you. So, um, again, I'm gonna have to agree with my running mates, but I'm gonna just say that I would like to see the district put policies in place that help our students progress and demonstrate some sort of direction in their forward movement toward commencement and life after high school, um, beyond the Plainfield Public School District. I would like to see some inclusion and transparency within our district where we're not only allowing the board to weigh in, but the students, um, the staff, and even the parents to weigh in on decisions, um, so that we can make productive decisions in the best interest of the district in its entirety. Um, because again, I know I spoke on this earlier, but we all have to work together to move the district forward. Every moving part needs the other in order to help the students progress and develop and achieve academic excellence. So, um, I think that it's important that we allow that inclusion, that we allow the students to, number one, let us know what, what we're lacking and what they need from us to be productive. Have the parents weigh in to let us know, um, our perspective from what our children might need and what we see at home. And then, of course, our educators who are with them for the majority of the day, um, they take the time with the students and they know them. They spend a lot of time developing each student one-on-one in, in a group setting, so they know where their weaknesses are, and they know what it takes to teach the students on certain levels. Um, but I also feel like, um, there are gonna be some conflicts and red tape with being transparent and, and sharing with the community on certain levels because the board has a job to do, and a part of that is creating policies. And another part of it, um, the public is not privy to. But I feel like if we spend more time on, on making decisions and talking about concerns from our parents and our students and our staff that direct directly, um, directly to their day-to-day jobs and the student's learning environment, then the red tape goes away. And then now we come up with more solutions than complaining and problems. I think with a board of nine members, we should work together because ultimately, we would be elected, um, to achieve a common goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyatt. Um, Ms. Harris, on behalf of Dr. Cunningham.
One of the goals which I feel is critical to our success is the development and implementation of a strategic plan for the Plainfield school system. I am not certain if the board is following any strategic plan now. We have to take a hard look at where our children are and where we want them to go. This strategic plan is a must, and it should include all stakeholders that are interested in moving this district forward. As a member of the board, I will work to ensure the public, community, parents, business owners, our political leaders, et cetera, buy into the district's new and improved strategic plan. This is one of the many ways the gaps can be bridged. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris, next question is, what do you think of the district's COVID prevention policies? And how would you balance our students' academic needs with the needs of student and staff safety?
I believe that the district's policies, uh, the COVID prevention policies should adhere to the CDC and the Department, the New Jersey Department of Health requirements and standards. So I also believe that we need to make sure that the funds, the federal funds that are going to be, that are available to school districts to upgrade and install, you know, their, um, um, uh, HVAC systems, you know, so the ventilation is appropriate, air conditioning is appropriate, because we need to ensure that there is a healthy physical environment that there are, uh, that students are in and that the staff is in. And we also need to, uh, ensure that, um, that parents are aware of what the protocols are and that they should understand when their children need to be kept home and if they, um, uh, show any symptoms that would require them to be kept home, what the, what the protocols are in terms of testing, you know, and when they would be able to return to school. And I also feel that that would also apply to teachers and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lilly.
Yes, thanks again, Mr. Costin. Appreciate it. So to echo on my partner's comments, yes, I agree that we have a, a good, a good policy based on to have the children report vaccinations in their dorms every morning. But we have to monitor those things as well. So each child coming to school, should be monitored with the, the scanners. Someone can get the door and scan children coming in, all the, the children, the teachers, the staff, faculty need to be all accountable, held accountable for their health. Like, we don't want to put our kids at risk, even though it's, it's very challenging and difficult for the parents on the parent's end. Still, no, no one should have a sick child come to school who has a possible being sick or carrying the COVID-19 virus to school and possibly affect the entire school system. So with, as, as Markett said, meant, I mentioned, having better, better school systems and ventilation in school systems, better HVAC, just air purifiers if need be. We have a budget to use, utilize the funds properly and appropriately to our kids' safety. And the CDC guidelines are applied to everyone, everyone, like, it's not for kids at risk. And then as far as the education, we have a, a pretty sound process with the kids, the children having the iPads to use at home when they don't have access to the school. Abuse at home, but we're not to abuse it. That's the key. Don't have the children abuse the fact that they stay home and learn from home when they could come to school when they're healthy. Don't, don't abuse our, our, our system for the bad. It's for good intent. That's my take on that. Thank you, Mr. Costin.
Thank you. Ms. Virgo?
Thank you, Mr. Costin. Um, I'd like to first just commend our teachers, staff, and administration for their efforts in keeping our students safe through unprecedented times. Um, our students can't learn if they're sick, so we have to do everything possible to keep our students healthy. Uh, across the country, I, I think everyone has seen that other districts and other states have been very lenient with their COVID-19 protocols. Working for a major hospital through the pandemic has really given me the perspective that that approach can be very dangerous. Uh, speaking specifically to the balance of the academic needs and the needs of the student, I think we also need to factor in the mental health effects that our students and our staff may be experiencing. Uh, transference of those considerations is their academic progress, of course. Um, I think what COVID has taught us all is that a great number of things that we thought could only be accomplished in a traditional or set way can be undertaken in an alternative way and still be just as effective. So let's find those methods and keep our children progressing and safe at the same time. I think the key for this board is to stay on mission of, stay on the mission of educating our students in the safest environment possible for students, teachers, and staff. Um, the prize, in my opinion, is the same. It's quality education and a safe environment for our children. But, um, if that goal can be preserved and enhanced through additional innovative and perhaps creative practices, then that's the direction that we must be open to pursue.
Thank you, Ms. Virgo. Mr. Webb?
Yeah, first, I'd like to say thank you, um, to all the teachers, faculty, um, support staff that have taken the opportunity to return to work and educate our students. So greatly appreciate that. But I am on board with the district's COVID prevention policies. I believe, given the circumstances, we've done the best job we could with the information provided because it seemed like it was changing on a weekly basis. Uh, we are fortunate to have access to the technology that allows students and faculty to continue working towards fulfilling our academic goals, both virtually and in person when possible. And the most critical challenge is ensuring the health and safety of the students, faculty, and the community. I will continue to follow the health and safety protocols as outlined by the CDC, the Department of Education, and follow the district superintendent's guidance whose task was implementing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mrs. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Costin. So I feel like, um, coming back into the schools after COVID was difficult for everybody, um, not just the staff and the students, the parents, the administration, but everybody. So I feel like the governor provided guidelines and protocols, and I feel like the district felt like they were doing what was in their best interest, what was in the district's best interest by following that and developing prevention policies and protocols for COVID that fell in line with what the governor set out for New Jersey, um, as a state in its entirety. And I feel like, um, the district was full of, the community in the district was full of skepticism and, and fear surrounding COVID, and there was a lot of back and forth with regard to going back into the schools. Um, we lost teachers and staff because of COVID, uh, guidelines and protocols. Um, some students aren't, still aren't in school. Uh, my daughter has an underlying condition, so for a while, I didn't want her to return back to school. But we realized that the students need to be in a classroom setting. So I feel like with the plans, um, with the rollout of the plans, could it have been better? Of course. But again, we have to understand that this was new for everybody. But I just feel like moving forward with decisions like this that directly impact the teachers and the students, number one, for sure, because the teachers and the TAs are in the classrooms with the students all day, and they ha, they're the ones interacting the majority of the time. So yes, you have administrators, and you have principals and everybody, and other staff members that are passing by, but you want to make sure that you include everybody so that you're making a decision where, um, everybody's comfortable and everybody's not gonna be satisfied, but you want them to be able to weigh in so that now we can come to a comprehensive solution as to how we move forward. But I feel like there hasn't been, um, much issue regarding the COVID protocols. I know that at the school that my children attend, um, they're very strict. Uh, they do check their temperatures. They do make sure that they turn around and send them home. If there's any type of symptom, can it be a little aggressive at times? Absolutely. But they're doing it in the best interest of our children. So I feel like if, as long as we do what we need to do, then everything will be good with regard to the kids and having a productive learning environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyatt. And Ms. Harris for Dr. Cunningham?
The policies put forth must adhere to the most updated information provided by the CDC, State of New Jersey, and City of Plainfield health officials. First and foremost, the safety of students and staff is paramount in this fight to end COVID-19. Keeping our most precious resources safe should be everyone's priority. We must make sure that all the district is following their COVID protocols, i.e. cleaning, social distancing, not overcrowding classrooms, children are wearing masks, encouraging vaccinations, and regular testing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Logan, you're on mute.
Thank you, everyone. Our next question, the majority of the parents in our school system are Spanish-speaking immigrants. How will you reach out to better engage this unique community? And our first speaker will be Mrs., Ms. Harris.
Thank you. Uh, absolutely, you know, nearly 80% of the students are Hispanic. And I do know that there is at least one, uh, Latina on the cu- current board. But I think that more effort needs to be made to engage and increase that number. Um, you know, represent, they make up the, the, the majority of the population, and they should be appropriately represented. Um, I think that it's important to try to encourage people, you know, to run and, 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 and really to, um, because, and, and it's also important for us as, as a potential board member to understand and be involved in this Hispanic community so that I understand and I, uh, can respond to the particular needs of that population. So I would go to churches, I would engage in, uh, events held by organizations. And actually, I would attend, attend some of these organizations. I would talk to students and parents. And that's also why I think that the strategic plan is so critical to this process because we would be soliciting their input and identifying what they see as their priority and directing resources and services to meet those needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lilly?
So yes, thanks again, Mrs. Logan. So to begin with the Spanish, our Spanish-speaking friends and family, we have, we have friends in, I mean, right now, in Plainfield who speak Spanish fluently. So our, our goal would be to use the churches, the communities, and our fellow friends to assist us with getting messages across, the messages across to our Spanish-speaking residents of Plainfield, Jersey, to help understand their needs, their, their, their concerns. If we don't understand their concerns, then we're not doing a much service. It's more of a disservice to our tax-paying citizens of Plainfield. Their, their message is just, just as important as my message and their message to our, our board members, which I hope be upon, my team, column two. But no, we, we have to address the big elephant in the room of, we need to have more, it would be great to have more representation, our Spanish-speaking community on the board. And I mean, at 80%, that's a, that's a majority. So yes, I agree with it, find ways to, to ensure that their voices are heard just like any of the voices are heard who are in a Plainfield school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Ms. Virgo?
Thank you, Mrs. Logan. Um, I really liked that this question was proposed, and I appreciate it being included this evening. I have always maintained that Plainfield's diversity is its strength. Uh, the diversity is present throughout our community and the tapestry woven from all of our individual backgrounds that serve the district very well. Um, however, I think we need to do a better job of making sure that all Plainfield families are represented and feel engaged in the process. So much so that it's actually one of our specific platform points for column one. Um, 70% of our student population, I think a little more than 70% now, is Latinx, Hispanic. So engaging all parents is paramount to the board's mission. Understanding that we have specific groups that make up the diverse community is equally important. And I would say to our Spanish-speaking community, usted y sus hijos son igualmente importantes en este proceso, which translates to you and your children are equally important in this process. So to accomplish this, I would actually propose listening sessions for any and all groups to engage with the board so that board members understand the needs and the wants of our entire community so that as policymaking takes place, those board members understand the perspective of all stakeholders. Serving on the Board of Education is technically a part-time position, but it should really be a full-time effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Virgo. Mr. Webb?
Uh, thank you. So, uh, depending on the needs, uh, there are several community resources, both in Plainfield and throughout Union County, um, that are readily, readily available to provide bearing services and advocate for broader community occasion, uh, community education um, for our, um, uh, Spanish-speaking residents. Um, I don't really like to say immigrants, uh, but, you know, we all came from somewhere. Um, but education is key, and a lot of times, there's a gap because, uh, the children in the home are the ones that are bilingual and bringing the information back to the families. Uh, so we just have to engage the youth as much as possible and encourage them to, uh, bring their parents, uh, to programs like the Saturday Academy that has done so well, um, with bridging, uh, the communication gap with education in the community. I will work with faculty members in the district as well as organizations in the community. I'll work with City Hall, uh, to help bridge the gap of support services and needed to help engage any, any, um, person, uh, looking to seek education, immigrant or otherwise, um, in the district, and that's Spanish-speaking. uh looking to seek education, immigrant or otherwise, um in the district, and that's Spanish-speaking, um as well as others. There are so many different um nationalities that come over that are really looking to take advantage of the American dream and further their education. Uh, so I think as a community as a whole, we'd like to embrace them as much as possible.
Thank you. Mrs. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mrs. Logan. So um I'd just like to state that um this past uh about this last weekend, I attended with my family the um Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month event. And I feel like with having events such as that, we are inviting that particular community uh to a particular setting where now we can become engaged with them directly. Sometimes we cannot always just walk into the community and speak to them, especially if we're not, if we don't speak Spanish. So I feel like if we recruit proper staffing within the district, um have community liaisons present as well at these events and have more community outreach as such, then we'll be able to communicate more effectively with them. And again, just like Mr. Webb was just saying, I feel like inclusion is um key because we don't always have to make decisions from the top down. The youth are our greatest assets because like he stated, they're going home communicating to their families what's going on in the school district, what they need from their families to um equip them with the resources that they need to uh excel academically in class. So we need to utilize them to help us to continue to communicate as well as their parents who speak English to communicate with their families and so on and so forth. Parent liaison and liaisons hired within the district are gonna be key, but utilizing the youth to our benefit and making sure that they understand us in our entirety and that they can uh properly articulate our message to their family members and their counterparts and otherwise. We can also uh frequent the Spanish population wherever they congregate at, so of course go to where they have church services and, and where they're playing at the park and whatever type of events that we can insert ourselves to just get the information out there. Again, partnerships are key strategic partnerships with varying organizations within the community and um various churches and different community leaders coming together to make sure that we're reaching them. Obviously, um, this is a large part of our community, but again, we have other assets in our community that we need to make feel equal, so we need to just work together to get the message across.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyatt. Um, next we have uh Ms. Harris speaking for Dr. Cunningham.
In order to get to know a person or group of people, you have to meet people where they are. I believe we must think outside the box, reach out to residents who have ties to this community of people. To be clear, technically, we are all immigrants at one time or another, and our families arrived in various um in a variety of different ways. I believe we should work to understand our fellow man. There are more similarities than differences if we just take the time to ask questions and to listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next question. There's currently a staff shortage in the state of New Jersey. What would you suggest that we do to get staff to come into our district? Once they agree to become a part of the Plainfield District, how, how do you suggest that we retain them?
Um, yes, of course, uh, we've seen um a reduction in staff. We've lost a lot of staff, uh, teachers at during COVID, early retirement. Um, but I actually come out of um a civil service background. And so, you know, I've, I've always had to work with the talent that I had. And what I always tried to do was to build on people's gifts. And allow people and give, challenge people and give them opportunity. So I think that training is essential. I think that, you know, creating a culture and an environment that is supportive and rewards, you know, productivity is important. Um, I, I, I know now that the uh district is working on developing a curriculum and that a, a part of the training for teachers is coaching. And I think that is uh that individual attention, you know, understanding and working with each teacher where they're at. Um, I think is, will go a long way to um and, and, and encouraging people to stay within the district. I also feel that our, our teachers are our best recruiters. And so if, if there is this sense that Plainfield supports, you know, people who are committed to children uh and are willing to um um, you know, to, to, to work hard, to collectively affect positive change within our system, I think that they'll be willing to recruit other teachers to our district. So um I think that they, ul- ultimately, I think it is a culture and the environment, you know, and the support that is given to them by administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Lily.
I feel that our teachers are one of our biggest assets and to have them come into town and to teach our future leaders of America. We, it'd be great to provide some level of having their voices heard, supporting those, those teachers who say, hey, I have an issue with this or that, okay? Take into, take, take into consideration and to, to put in some kind of some kind of corrective action as well as preventative action from it reoccurring. So now they tell you about an incident or informing about an incident, but to actually do something about it, address it. Don't say, okay, yeah, all right, so to get them in, into our school system will be a challenge, yes, because you have lots of competition in, in this triptych area. But to give them the opportunity to have their voices heard, respected, and accounted for, that's, that's our goal of what it means to us is to just have them. I'm sorry, you can keep going. That was another individual. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Oh, so just have them know they have a voice. We're listening. We're going to actually do something about your concerns, your issues within the classroom with it, with your students. We're going to listen, try to put in some kind of corrective action and preventative action for recurring. No one wants to feel unsafe in their environment, so let's make sure, ensure that they remain safe and sound to do their job effectively.
Thank you, Mr. Lily. And let me uh repeat the question one more time. Uh, New Jersey is currently experiencing a staff shortage. What would you suggest that we do to get staff to come into our district? And once they agree to become part of the Plainfield School District, how do you suggest that we retain?
Thank you, Mr. Costin. Um, so in the last couple of years, the student population here in Plainfield has grown by about five percent. But we have not been able to respond to that with an increase in teachers, so this is a real issue. Education is the key to success for our students and our communities, so this is really a question of investment, in my opinion. Um, teaching, like any profession, requires basic elements to entice members to the profession and organizations that require their knowledge and abilities. Um, these basic elements might include a culture of inclusiveness, the ability to grow professionally, an ongoing sense of accomplishing something, competitive salary and benefits, flexible scheduling perhaps, and the ability to stick to the core elements of their profession without being inundated with administrative, administrative work. I think that we need to focus on these as a board and find the combination of elements that will create the environment for staff to want to come to our district. So the question uses the phrase get staff to come to our district. I say let's do the work necessary to create the environment where staff will come before being asked. Recognize also that I framed my solution by including competitive salary and benefits, but it's only one of the six pillars that I mentioned. Um, I think ultimately the solution to being and remaining competitive is not based solely on salary, but equally on the other factors that need to be instilled in our schools by having the board support those initiatives whenever they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Virgo. Mr. Webb.
Yeah, I would agree with um with Sarah. Uh, you gotta pay the people. You know, and, and, and compensation is a great incentive, but there are other things. Um, I believe we have to look within our current ranks of staff and faculty and continue to groom the talent we have, and hopefully they will be able to be our best recruiters. Of inviting other people through networking to come and really support the district um as a whole. Um, I think that we need to focus on the mission uh as it stands to educate our youth and, and make the community um more inviting uh to the best teachers uh that are available to us. Um, but uh you, you can't uh take away from a lot of the faculty that we do have, so retention is very important. We wanna keep the good quality staff that we have. We, we want to, you know, hopefully um discourage them from going to other districts um by making a, a safe, comfortable, uh progressive work environment where they know that they're having success with following their passion of, of educating our youth. Ideally, people wanna work in places where there are opportunities for advancement, good compensation, and they're a valued member of the team. So if we uh focus as a district on making sure that we hit those points, I think that we will become a, a more attractive school district. And, and quite honestly, if we have some success with educating our students, um, people wanna be part of a winner. So um I think that they will just remain committed to the goal of educating our youth and having success with their advancement.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mrs. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Costin. So um I appreciate this question because I feel like the dilemma is definitely twofold and um the, it's certainly attracting new hires and then it's certainly on the second and um the retention of employees in general. So I believe that Plainfield has to change their approach to the hiring process. That offering a hiring package that is more competitive and aggressive in our current market is key. That once we begin to procure, procure new employees, that we have to provide a sense of security and room for growth. So we can uh retain employees, new and existing, by investing heavily in the training and development, staff development, which will promote not only personal growth, but growth within our district. Uh, when it comes to retention, we have to, have to definitely shift our focus from attracting new hires to trying to retain the employees that we currently have, our existing employees, because that's the makeup of our district right now. Uh, we have to make sure that they wanna stay in Plainfield just as much as we're trying to make Plainfield more enticing to new hires. So I feel like adjusting the salary wage guide. Um, again, coming from civil service, you might wanna look to including steps that allow the employees to earn a honest living, include, um, allow them to grow and hire within our district when other opportunities arise within the district at the next level. Um, I feel like we need to support each other and treat our employees how we wish to be treated um as employees. And if we're all working toward the same goal, then we should move accordingly, and then that way we can continue to move the district forward. Um, we have to make sure that we're doing what we need to do here in order for Plainfield to ultimately be enticing. If the staff and the employees are happy um as it stands, or if we're doing the work and putting in the work to make them happy, then that's naturally going to attract more employees. And again, you guys have said it already that um our teachers are our greatest asset in this process, our staff and administrators who are in those roles, the uh professionals and, and their expertise in those fields, they are our best assets in driving in new employees and, and promoting the district and making sure that they wanna come here to Plainfield to serve our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyatt. And now Ms. Harris for Dr. Cunningham.
There must be an outstanding culture and climate. It must show through the current workforce that we have an outstanding work environment. One of our best cheerleaders is our staff. It is our staff feel, if our staff feels valued, encouraged, and respected, then they will in turn bring that to our children. As a board member, I would ask that a survey be done to determine our current state of affairs. Once we have identified our strengths and weaknesses, then we can work with my fellow board members to create district goals addressing climate and cultural issues. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Ms. Logan.
Thank you. In order to convey standards of excellence, do you feel that students should be graded unilaterally with a grade floor? As in, no one gets below a D? Or keep this only on a case-by-case basis throughout our district? Mrs. Harris.
That was a question um that I found particularly um challenging. I know that there is probably a tendency to want to um to do that, to, you know, make, give every student at least a D. But I don't think that in the long run, that that is something that helps the individual, you know, to uh, cause I think that what's more important than that is what we are doing as a system to address the individual needs of each child. And so that our expectations should be high. But I don't think that we can compensate for our lack of doing our job by, you know, reverting to a system like that. That's my opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Lily.
Ms. Logan again. So I agree with my roommate, Marquette, that it would be a disservice to our, our teachers, our faculty, our all of our stakeholders to have a, you know, a grading system like no, I'm, I, I don't think it's the best option or route we can take. Because it's, so if one person gets a, a B, we should all get Bs because we didn't study, we got all the questions wrong. No. It's a case-by-case basis, I believe. It's, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna push a kid through school knowing that they don't understand the
That's the response.
Oh, they don't understand the curriculum. What goes against a student? You're in the real world now. It's like, well, what's that? I don't know. But you pass schools, this is the bare minimum of a school, but you you don't comprehend, you don't, you don't get it. So no, I'm not, I'm for case-by-case basis all the way. I'm not for the no-tall behind and keep pushing the pipeline to become just your average worker. No. I want them to do better in life, do better than me. Have a goal, have a dream, and uh go, go chase that dream and goal. So now I, I look forward to case-to-face spaces, become the grading system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lily. I'm gonna repeat the question again. It's a little long. In order to convey standards of excellence, do you feel that students should be graded unilaterally with a grade floor? As in, no one gets below a D? Or keep this only on a case-by-case basis throughout our district?
Thank you, Ms. Virgo. Thank you. Um, I think there's a lot to unpack in this question. Um, I think the board needs to look at a variety of innovative and creative methods, practices, and solutions to foster and promote the mission of educating students. I think the board should also look at all ways to produce grading that improves learning, teaching, but more than anything, retention. Alternative methods of providing a one-dimensional quantitative score to label a student's performance, although traditional is not necessarily the best way to get students to learn or function more efficiently as learners, in my opinion. I think schools need a grading system that not only seeks to create a better and more sustainable learning environment, but one that also makes teaching more effective and more satisfying, as we spoke about in our last question. Um, teachers and administrators who spend time and effort chasing paperwork on antiquated and ineffective methods of evaluating our students could be focusing on that direct teaching and managing the environments that make the overall mission more effective.
Thank you, Ms. Virgo. Mr. Webb.
Quite honestly, I would have to review the data more closely in order to speak with detail on such an important matter. However, I do believe that some learning environments and grading structures could apply differently and yield sharply contrasted results. Unless the data supports a higher percentage of successful graduates, then I wouldn't encourage mediocrity. Uh, uh, you know, a personal story, I, I remember uh being gifted and talented. And uh our teacher did an experiment for a test one time, and he said, you know, um, everyone would either get an A or everyone would get a C. And I just remembered being discouraged by that because it didn't really require much effort. You knew what you were gonna get. Um, it didn't encourage you to try your best. Um, and you know, of course I got an A, but I just felt like, you know, I wasn't challenged. And I'm glad that experiment didn't last much long, very long. I think we need to take each case on an individual basis and give the children the support that they need, uh find the resources available and uh challenge them. But you know, if, I would have to look at the data quite honestly uh a lot closer, but I, I wouldn't, at, at first, at first thought, I wouldn't support it.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mrs. Wyatt. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mrs. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mrs. Logan. Um, so I'm gonna say that, um, I don't agree with the students being graded unilaterally, um, with a grade floor. I feel like that's not showing them the support that they need. Um, we should believe in our young scholars and that grading this way will definitely just do them a disservice. Um, we should put more focus into preparing our students for the real world. And in the real world, there's no coddling of our students to, as to whether or not, if you're doing poorly, then you're, you're behaving poorly. If you're performing poorly, then you're performing poorly. If we don't push them and encourage them, then, um, and challenge them, then we're gonna hinder their progress by just simply giving them a grade only to prevent them from technically failing. But in the grand scheme of things, if we're looking at, at the D as the grade for, then they're failing already. When you look at it from a perspective of what the grades actually mean, C is average. So anything below a C is below average, and that's not really showing them that they can do better. If we encourage them and we teach them and we, um, help them along the way, then we can push them to their greatest potential and then ultimately produce intelligent and productive members of society. We can't start now or at these young ages showing the kids that it's okay to be mediocre, or it's okay to settle. And that's how you produce lazy individuals, individuals that don't want to work hard for, um, what they have to obtain in life. And then that kind of trickles down into everything else in their lifestyle. Again, we're not just teaching these students, um, academic excellence. We're trying to produce, um, well-rounded individuals. We're trying to cultivate them in every aspect and pour into them what we learned in our experiences through their own experiences and a knowledge that we can provide them. So I feel like if we do that, then we're sending a wrong message. So I absolutely do not support it. Now, on a case-by-case basis, maybe under very strict circumstances, possibly. But I also feel like that's what we have special needs programs for, and, um, IEPs and, um, five or four plans. I feel like that's what all of that is for. So there's no need to simply give a low grade for the sake of not failing.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyatt. Uh, Ms. Harris, on behalf of Dr. Cunningham.
Thank you. We must begin to set high standards of excellence for our children. The first question is why? Why does the superintendent want to give our children, our students, a grade floor? I believe this should be looked at on a case-by-case basis. We have to send a signal to our children that we are expecting more from them. We must ensure we are providing all of the resources and support that the students need, ensuring that there is equity in every classroom for every child. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Um, did you want to close this out with asking everyone for a concluding statement?
Sure. At this time, we're going to ask everyone in the same order for a closing statement, and we'll start with Ms. Harris.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the Plainfield Board of, the Board, the Plainfield Education Association for hosting this forum. Um, I really, uh, want to thank you for the opportunity for me to present myself to the community as a candidate for the Plainfield Board of Education. Um, this is the first time I've ever run for an office, and it is something that I take very seriously. And if elected, you know, I am honored. I would be honored to, uh, contribute my experiences and my, my, my insight into how we can change the system. I have been involved in, in, in reforms in the child welfare system, and I know that we can turn things around here in Plainfield. So I ask for your support. I urge you to vote column two, to vote for Monique Cunningham, Alan Lilly, and Marquette Harris. We are aiming higher to make a difference in the lives of our children. We want to prepare them to compete not only in New Jersey, not only in Plainfield, but to compete globally. It's important that our school district, you know, our, our school district is tied to our growth as a city. It is tied to our property values. So collectively, the community, the s- school district, we can make a change, and I'm committed to that. And I ask again that you vote column two, Monique Cunningham, Alan Lilly, and Marquette Harris. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Lilly.
Thank you, Mr. Costin. So I'd like to thank the PEA, all the stakeholders, the community, the staff, everyone on the call as well, supporting us. But as my, as Marquette said, yes, we're trying to make a difference in our school system, which also helps our, our home values and our students. This, it's, it's a, it's a huge dynamic of, anything, anything that's gonna be affected by having a better school system, a stronger school system, more, more robust school system, where our kids are going to excel and compete on a world stage. We don't want to be looked at as our father as well, you complain to your school system, oh, it's okay, it's mediocre. No. Let's, let's be proud to push our kids and to vote, vote our kids to doing better. Like, where's the problem with that? We, we all just, just aim higher together as a community, as a city, and show the world that, yes, our kids matter. Our kids matter just as much as the next child. Let's continue pushing forward. Column two, Cunningham, Lilly, and Harris. Thank you so much. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Ms. Verga.
Thank you, Mr. Costin, and thank you to everyone else. Um, thank you for the opportunity once again to be here this evening. I hope that I have offered some additional insight into who I am and what I value. Um, whether those of you watching have children or not, the strength of our school district should matter to everyone here in Plainfield. Cities can thrive with a strong school system, and they can suffer without one. So I think it's time for us to collectively put politics aside and really focus on how we can do what's necessary for the next generation of Plainfield. I hope that my running mates, Henne Wyatt, Victor Webb, and I have earned your vote this evening for column one. And if given the opportunity to serve on the Board of Education, I hope that the people of Plainfield will hold us accountable to the promises we've made to you this evening. I love this city, and I think we have so much potential. I am ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work. Um, while it may sound silly, I, I really believe that together we can change the world, starting right here in Plainfield. Um, I encourage all voters to continue to do their research on all of us and to vote on it before November second. Gracias por tu tiempo. Uh, once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Verga. Mr. Webb.
Yeah, so first I'd like to say thank you for the P, to the PEA for allowing this opportunity to speak, uh, with your members tonight. I'd like to say if I've worked with you at all, um, in any capacity in the last twenty years, uh, that it has been, uh, helpful. Uh, it's been, and just to let you know that it's been genuine, uh, that my running mates and I will take our duty very seriously. We are committed to the community, uh, whether we are on the board or not, but we would love your vote. Um, you know, this is my first time, uh, just, uh, extending my candidacy, uh, to be an elected official, but I've always been in the community, whether it's volunteering for, uh, the PTO or just volunteering at a school, um, organizing programs, uh, doing whatever it takes to push our students to be successful. Um, I'm truly committed, um, and I'd just like to continue to highlight the positive things that the district is doing. I'd like to be a board member to continue that work on behalf of the students and the faculty, and I'll work hard to represent the Plainfield Public Schools. Uh, please, uh, like I said, consider column one. We'd appreciate your vote, and we'll work hard to, to earn your respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mrs. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Costin. So, um, same as everyone else, I'd just like to thank the PEA for inviting us here to this forum to, um, introduce ourselves to the PEA and the members of the community and whoever's watching here today, and for allowing us to share our platform and our answers to the wonderful questions that you provided to gain a better insight on, um, our perspectives and how we view the district and the school board as it is right now, what our plan is to move the district forward, and what policies and whatnot we feel like should be put in place to help us make a difference in, um, the Plainfield Public Schools. But, um, I'd just like to share that, um, the Empowerment Through Education team, we're very passionate community leaders and advocates for the youth. Um, all three of us spend a lot of our time, um, within the community. So just as Victor Webb said, whether we're elected to the school board or not, we're always gonna continue to do the work in the community. Um, the school board, uh, election is bipartisan, so it's really no, uh, political affiliation involved with regard to what we're trying to do and, and how we're making our decisions and the work that we want to put into it. We just want to get, roll up our sleeves and do the work, just like, um, my other running mate, Sarah Vergo, said. So again, we'd like to just thank you. I'm hoping that we have gained your support through getting to know us a little bit better and our answers to your questions. Hopefully you've gained a better insight on our plan and our platform and how we can be an effective asset to the board. Again, I hope that you guys vote for column one, the Empowerment Through Education team. I hope that we've been able to answer your questions to the best of our knowledge. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to us at www.4boe.com. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyatt, and Ms. Harris for Dr. Cunningham.
Okay. Again, thank you, Plainfield Board of Ed, oh, sorry, let me start over again. Thank you, Plainfield Education Association, for hosting this very much-needed forum. I am most appreciative that the PEA has allowed my voice to be heard. Even though I was not able to attend, I felt it was very important for me as a candidate to voice my responses to these questions. I hope that I have been able to share with you, through my fellow candidates, who I am. The, I respectfully ask for your vote for column two, aiming higher together, Cunningham, Lilly, and Harris. Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Harris. And I'm gonna ask our, uh, co-chair, Ms. Melissa Logan, and she will close this out this evening.
Thank you to all of our candidates. Thank you to all of our members and the members of the community in Plainfield for joining us this evening. We really appreciate your time, and we hope, uh, we have, uh, given you an opportunity to get to know the candidates better. And, uh, don't forget to vote on November second. Thank you again. Good night.